Okay, welcome everyone, please have a seat. Welcome to Board of Selectmen's meeting, December fifteenth, 2014. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending. This is the biggest crowd that I've had to be chairman for, so go easy on me folks, please. We're missing one of our members tonight. Maureen is traveling, so she could not attend, but she promises to watch it on TV. So, well, not tonight, she's gonna watch the tape on TV. I am going to give a brief outline. We have no public announcements, correct, members?
I do not, tonight.
No?
No.
Okay. So, we're gonna get right to business. The special meeting is to discuss, I guess, the Griffin's Dairy. So, we all know why we're here. We are members of boards, we have abudders that were invited. So, I'm gonna start with a brief overview, a real quick overview, then I'm gonna turn it over to our town manager, who's gonna talk about some of the things we're gonna talk about tonight. We had asked if you were planning on speaking, to give us your name, we have a list of, I think, six or seven people, but anyone who wants to speak, they'll have a chance to speak. Okay, as we are, most of us are aware, May nineteen ninety-eight, the town voted to purchase, for $750,000, Griffin's Dairy, which is about sixty-four acres, half in Abington and half in Rockland. December nineteen ninety-eight was the first Griffin's Dairy committee meeting. They met, I was actually chairman of that committee, they met for five years, and we presented our recommendations in April of '04 to the current board, the Board of Selectmen at the time. None of those recommendations were acted upon, and they have not been acted upon since. Since then, the Griffin's Dairy has become overgrown. Haying stopped a couple of years in. Vandalism, fire to the barn. The barn was in halfway decent shape when, fifteen years ago, but now that has gone by the wayside. The house was occupied for a short while, too, with tenants, but that didn't work out so well. Some good things have happened up there, though. I believe for one or two years, there were some youth golf lessons up there. They were given to a town, I think by the Rockland Golf Course, they sponsored it, and some of the Abington youth were trained in golf. Several years, there was a fall festival sponsored by the Lions and some other groups, and that was very successful. The last three or four years, I'm not sure of how long it's been, but very successful program, the town gardens, which has expanded every year, and I think there's a waiting list to get on that, so that's a great use of the property. And more recently, the farmers' market that Abington has in the summer has been up there, too. Numerous times throughout the last fifteen years, ideas have been revisited for the property, including using it for a senior center, using it for sports fields, a new school was batted around, the idea of a new school up there was batted around, farming. And also, a couple times, several times, when the budget was really tight, there was talk about selling off some of the portions, the outlined portions, to fund some budget deficits. Nothing's happened, no decisions have been made, and now there's a second study committee in place to make recommendations again. I would like, would like to work with the town boards committees, residents, abudders, neighborhood groups, both study committees, to finally determine what is the best way for the town to use and enjoy this diamond in the rough. That is why we are here, that's why we are seeking your input. We will not be making any decisions tonight, but all future discussions about this will be in our open meetings on regular meeting nights. Rick, do you want to take it from here, and then give it back to me?
Sure, just a couple, a little bit of input you would ask for. Number one, as you know, the award for the demolition of the barn and the house is in place, the contract's in place. Right now, we are waiting for the electrical disconnect before the official twenty-one day clock starts ticking for that project to occur. However, as of today, the asbestos remediation has begun in advance of the official twenty-one day clock ticking, so that's, so the project is underway, probably nothing you'd notice, though, right away. The second thing I want to point out is that the handouts we made are very difficult to figure out what would be of help tonight, but we do have a copy of the original committee recommendations, and the good thing about that is it has a, about a good map, as you're gonna find, that you can hold in your hand, as well as some of the initial recommendations and some of the people involved, and then there's also-
The picture of the cow on the cover is really, you know, this was high-tech fifteen years ago.
For me, it's still high-tech. The, and there's also a copy of the town meeting vote that authorized the purchase of the property and authorized the debt exclusion, which ultimately passed. So, to the extent that those provide some, some history and guidance, those are available for people. The only other thing I'd like to just point out in, is, and I want to thank Sue Brennan, she invited, and Graham Knoll, who, if all goes well, won't say a word tonight, but he's been instrumental in guiding our sage committee and our net meeting agreement and some other, because of their deliberations in terms of, you know, energy in the town, the government of Abington. So, and Graham is a consultant, and he came down from the North Shore, just in case any questions came up regarding, I know that was years ago, a solar farm was discussed, I know that's not on the drawing board, but I know that just over the weekend, some of us read about, in the newspaper, about a possibility of a national grid having a possible project in Abington, and there's been no, we don't have any applications for permitting or anything else, so that's kind of new to us. But to the extent that there's any energy questions that arise, Graham was nice enough to come down, so, like I said, we hope he doesn't have to say anything, but he's here if, if we need him, so.
You wanna talk about the Old Colony Planning Council?
Yes, as you know, the board some, several months ago, asked the Old Colony Planning Council to assist with a master plan of this property, which is, in many ways, precipitated this meeting to help provide guidance to Old Colony Planning Council. They will be doing it under the, what they call the DLTA, that, which is their local, district local technical assistance program for the town next, this coming calendar year. But they obviously need input from the community to find out what the needs are, so they, you know, there was a misconception that some had raised, that we were, you know, who's Old Colony Planning Council to tell us what we're gonna do with our property? Well, it's, it's not the way it works. We have to give them some sense of what the needs of the community are, and their goal would be then to try to help master plan what's possible, you know, how the best use of the property based upon those needs, without obviously losing the benefit and the value of the piece of property, so, so that's, that's where that stands.
Okay, thank you, Rick. We've had a few people that have asked to speak, I have a list, and we'll take those people first. Please, when you get up to the microphone, please state your name, your address, if you're on a committee or representing, representing a group, you can mention that. Very important, we want to hear what your vision is, we want, you know, what you would like to see on this sixty-four-plus acres, not what you don't want to see, okay? People are very passionate here in the town, and that's one of the things that I love about Abington, but please keep it positive, and try to limit your remarks to maybe four or five minutes. Selectman Tom is gonna act as our timekeeper, he's ready to go, he's got the stopwatch going, so if you hear the table banging, that means your time's almost up. Time permitting, though, you will get the opportunity to speak again at the end, after everyone else has had the opportunity, and please stay up there in case board members have any questions to ask you. And if it's agreeable to the board, I'd like to bring up Carrie Bates from the Griffin's Dairy Committee, the current Griffin's Dairy Committee, to speak, please.
Carolyn Bates, forty-one Oakland Circle, and I am a member of the Griffin's Dairy Advisory We have voted and made recommendations to the town managers and to the Board of Selectmen during our tenure, which began in two thousand and eleven, May of two thousand and eleven was our first meeting. To, here, present this evening is Chairman Richard Donovan, Lorraine Ryerson, and Chad Our first priority was in regard to the safety of the property, then to make it usable, and hopefully profitable to the town in the future, with as little disturbance as possible to the land. Here, we have, I'm reading, because I'm so nervous. We have, over these past three and a half years, met with members of the community, several abudders, area farmers interested in leasing the property, the Abington School Superintendent, town managers, several selectmen, the sage committee members, and soccer representatives. We have had two existing but unused wells capped and secured, several outbuildings, which were collapsed, removed, and the area cleaned. We've worked with the sage committee to establish a community garden of twenty-one plots at first, and now it's up to twenty-five plots. On August twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, the committee voted to recommend to the selectmen that Griffin's Dairy be used for agricultural use, to include a farm and a community garden, with a consideration be given for two practice fields. And also consideration for perhaps a solar field. We met with the Conservation Commission to proceed forward toward mowing the property. With result of wetlands delineation completed and then revised in August of two thousand and twelve, we received approval from the Conservation Commission and the Department of Environment, Environmental Protection for agricultural use. July second of two thousand and twelve, we eliminated a dog park for consideration. We placed articles for money to be raised and appropriated at the two thousand and thirteen town meeting, for the purposes of mowing the field and to demolish the house and barn on the property. The monies were appropriated. The mowing has been done, the contract with the company for the demolition of the buildings has been awarded through the town manager's office, of which he spoke just earlier. The committee voted at its October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, meeting to reject the request for five soccer fields on the property, thus keeping its recommendation for primarily agricultural use intact. And today, the committee has not met with any persons representing the use of any solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, Mike?
It's often spoke about the use of agriculture, and there's farmers that are interested. Are they interested to what degree in, you spoke of leasing the property, are there, I mean, I, I don't know what's that about, are they interested in bringing a herd back, building a barn, or what?
Okay, originally, when we, we met, it, it was the idea to have, keep the barn intact. We tried to keep the barn usable. It was advised that probably a new barn should be, that one should be demolished and a new one installed, should it be necessary. We have not gone forward with that at all, other than the demolish, demolition of the existing barn. As far as a farm is concerned, we have not proceeded with that at this point. It's mainly keeping the property itself under an agricultural use, so that it can be, perhaps the town can lease it to, to someone and have that person take care of the property properly, under all of the guidelines of the state and the environmental protection, so that the property is protected environmentally.
And so, is there actively a farmer showing an interest in that right now? I understand there was a Mr. Hons-
Not that, not to my, there, there have been farmers that have come to our, our committee, yes, and, but they have to, right now, have not indicated, because we haven't put anything out.
Right.
They haven't come to us.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Basically the same. Questions, Mike, just to follow up, carry on. When was the last time you had any discussions with anybody who was interested as far as farming goes?
The last time, I believe, was June of two thousand and thirteen, was it, maybe about a year ago.
About a year ago, okay.
Yes, and it was someone from Plimpton.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I did have one other question. I guess as far as the farming goes, were they looking more for, go back to the dairy farm sort of a thing, or was it more to grow crops, or?
Probably for growth.
For growth, yeah.
Just to keep it so that it is as pristine a property as possible, also to, to, to free up the waterways, the drainage ditches, there's a stream that goes by there between Rockland and Abington, which is being encroached, it's building up, so the water is building up, and, and the wetlands are actually becoming larger.
Expanding, yeah.
So, and I believe there's a difference in a map between, I think, two thousand and five and two thousand and twelve, when the last delineation was done, which showed a twenty percent increase of the wetlands.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you, you okay with answering?
My name's Bill Weaver, myself and my wife live directly across the street, we own three thirty-one and three thirty-five, I'm just curious, I don't have an animal, but why was a dog park a section ruled out? I'm just curious.
At that time, the, there, there was an interest in bringing in some cattle, maybe if, maybe some heifer, some few, not, not a whole herd, just a few, and perhaps using it as a educational center for, for the, for the community. The dogs, the dogs and the cattle don't get along, they're, they're-
I understand. The cattle aren't on the, on the floor anymore, are they?
No, they're not, no, we have not discussed that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, I have a question, if, if, I have a question for Rick. If the town were to enter into an agreement with a farmer, that would be a lease of the property, that would require a town meeting vote, is that correct?
Any, any agreement beyond three years would require a vote of the town through town meeting, whether in the form of, you know, a license or a lease, whatever the terminology is, but, so it would have to go to town meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the next speaker, Chris Walsh, from Youth Soccer Association, to come up and speak, please, go up to the microphone. After these, this list of scheduled speakers is done, I'm gonna give the Griffin's Dairy Committee recommendations from the first committee, and then we'll accept anybody else that wants to, to speak.
My name's Chris Walsh, I, I'm the treasurer on the Board of Youth Soccer. I inherited this about ten weeks ago. I show up at a board meeting, they asked me to try to get the, get some fields. Our need is a result of the high school being constructed. The first thing, actually, I handle packets of them, the first thing that's gonna happen with the, the construction is on, the construction goes off the bid, September, December of this, this time next year, they're gonna start ripping up the fields behind the high school. At that point, youth lacrosse, youth football, youth soccer have no fields to play on. You're talking combined, six hundred youth soccer players, a hundred football, I mean, a hundred lacrosse and a hundred fifty football players, not having fields to play on. That's the reason why I'm up here, I'm up here for the kids, I'm not up here for personal gain, everything like that, just so everybody knows. And so, they are gonna be building fields up the high school, I am well aware of that, they're building two turf fields. I have a, the reason I actually have information, I received from Rich Testa, who is the chairman of the high school committee, I received that from the other day, it's in your packet selection. And the timeline, the construction, the two turf fields will be March of two thousand and sixteen, with a, a requested completion date of August two thousand and sixteen, which would give us two turf fields for the two thousand and sixteen soccer season. However, we use four at the high school at this time. So, we would have to separate children from other siblings and have them scattered throughout the town. We do have access to the Riley Field, if need be, but that's one field, we still would need another field, so you'd be breaking up families, you know, like, a lot of times on a Saturday, you'll have a family show up up there, it'll be one parent with three kids, I have some parents, you have kids in U-six, U-eight, U-ten, and they wouldn't be able to, the mother or the father wouldn't be able to be around all the kids, so we're gonna actually have a negative impact on our program, which has expanded. Last year, we had about three hundred and eighty-five kids, this year, we had five hundred and fifty to six hundred kids. So, it's, the program is growing, and this could hurt us if we don't have fields for them to play on. We're looking to have at the fields, at the Griffin Dairy, I'm looking for an area of six to seven acres of the sixty-four acres. I'm not trying to steal any land from anybody, I'm not trying to, I'm looking for a temporary housing off to the side, away from, you know, the community gardens. I prefer towards the Patterson Street side, as you can see, which will be this side here, that way the community gardens will be left alone, and it would allow them to continue and expand. I'd rather see, I'm very environmental, I want to see anything that can happen positive for that land. I would love that some of the ideas that they were talking about, having, bringing back a harvest fair, having pumpkin patches for the kids to go down and pick up, have scouting overnight, we're, we're not building structures, we're not building a sports complex, we're building, all we're doing is cutting the grass, kids going outside running around. It's two days a week, Saturday and Sunday, practice on it during the week, they're not gonna be screaming, it's an hour here, an hour there, we can stagger it, I just need a home for my kids. And it's a, the rest of the time that space is used, use it, you know, have a county fair, I don't, I'm much concerned about that portion of it, as much as I am to have fields for the kids to play on. Let's see here, I'm looking for, as I said, I'm looking for the Patterson Street section, but I'm not an engineer, I leave that up to the engineers, they've hired people to look at the land, figure out what the best course of action would be. We're looking at, once again, I also want to reiterate, there is not gonna be, this is not gonna be a tax burden on the, on the taxpayers. Any work that's done up there will be fundraised by football, lacrosse, and soccer. This is not gonna be a burden on anybody in this town, nobody's taxes are gonna go up as a result of this. This is strictly on us trying to take care of the kids that want to, and we want to keep them together, we don't want them scattered all over the town. I've looked at some of the other ideas, which was the B plan, of having a field down on Green Street, went up on High Street, you're scattering the families all over town, and some of them are baseball fields, so I don't think the baseball teams will be too happy with us playing on theirs and tearing their fields up as well. But you're also scattering them all, that's the worst-case scenario is to have that happen. Let's see here. That's kind of pretty much all I have to say about it. I mean, I gave you my bullet points for this, if you have any questions, or anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer questions for you, what I know. Once again, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a concerned parent, so.
Board members, any questions? Tom?
Chris, how many fields do you have today up at the high school that you?
Behind the high school right now, there's four soccer fields that we, that we'll break up, like, the little ones, the U-six and U-eight, they're turned sideways, so they kind of stack, like, you'll have a regular full-size soccer field, but they'll play sideways, so they use a shorter field. We use four up there, and then on the far end, it's either used by youth football, or it's by lacrosse, so technically, there's five fields up there.
Right. You don't use the Riley Field today?
We do not, the only person that has permission to use the Riley Field is the high school sports.
Right. So, I guess when I, when I look at the memorandum-
Yeah, actually, I can go through the pictures in there.
To, to Rich Testa, from the, I guess it's the owner or the architect.
That's-
Basically, what, what you highlighted, that starting in December of two thousand and fifteen, use of any of those four fields goes away.
The first thing's ripped up are the, are the snack shack and the fields, that's 'cause that, where the fields are is where the school's gonna be, as you know.
Right. So, how many, is it two or three years that those two synthetic fields will be available behind the high school?
This is what I'm being told by Rich Testa, which is in the, drafted up in that letter that he, he addressed to me, is he's, his goal is that the first project that they're gonna do while they're building the rest of the building, is focusing on putting two synthetic fields, two turf fields, that's the first part, and he's hoping to have them up and running by August of two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so about a year and a half that you, little over, that you have to wait.
Exactly.
And then, the other two, two more would be developed out in front of the new, kind of-
Yeah, there'll be one on the side, and then there will be one in front of the school.
Right.
But the one in front of the school can't go till they actually rip down the, the old building.
Right. So, at the, in the spring of two thousand and twenty, you'd be made whole again, and you'd have your four fields.
We'd have four fields up there.
One of my questions when, when you came before was, it seems like it's sort of an all or nothing, are you, is board is considering any other options that if Griffin's farm doesn't become available, that you're gonna have fields available for the kids, are you looking at other towns, facilities, or whatever?
I've looked all over, every, any place that I could find in empty grass, I drove all, I know this town now like the back of my hand, I'm actually from, not from this town originally, six years ago I moved here, but I've driven around any open flat land, I've driven it, I've driven out there, seen what could be done with it. But, once again, the impact on, on the sports programs of having, like, I could have a field down at the, behind one of the middle schools, and then have one over, it's not gonna be conducive to the, to the program, and actually, I think we'd see a drastic decrease in numbers. I also went down to the airbase. The airbase is not usable, first off, it's private property, so we're not, we don't have access to that. I drove down and looked at the soccer field they had there, and I've been told by youth lacrosse referees, football and soccer, that referees will not allow children to play down there because it's broken glass all over the field. And on top of that, from what I read in the paper, and having some discussions with people on the tri-town board, the soil is contaminated, too, so I'm not gonna expose children to any kind of hazard, plus it's out of town, it's not even in Abington.
Right. My last question is, have you come up with any preliminary financing or cost to develop six fields?
What, you mean like, how will I raise the money?
For the farm.
I'll get it, I, it will be taken care of, I mean, I'm, I haven't, I haven't hired anybody to go out and, like, a contractor, my goal is, I've actually done a project like this, like I told you before, I did a project very similar to this in Holbrook, and I actually had all the, the land clearing and all the hydro seeding, I had everything done for nothing.
So, would you be starting from scratch as far as youth lacrosse and soccer, is there any?
All we have to do, we just have to make it smooth, I'm not looking-
No, no, I'm asking about your, the cost, you have financing, is there any money available in your treasury?
My treasury, I have twenty-five thousand dollars in it right now.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy, you?
Tom basically asked every question I was gonna ask.
Well, Mike, just, just a couple of comments.
It is.
The first I've heard, 'cause with the town manager, we did meet with Mr. Barry from tri-town, and he acknowledged that the field was overgrown, but I didn't hear of any contamination, that's really the first I've heard of it. He did have a, an issue with where you would park, okay? So, just to carry on to that, believe me, I want something to be done, I just, I'm a little skeptical over where we're gonna do it, how we're gonna do it, if we can do it, because when I last looked at the wetlands, I went to a couple of Conservation Commission meetings, that Patterson side had enough, a fair amount of wetlands in it, so just to be able to go in and smooth it out and stuff, we'd have to get permission, 'cause we just be, we can't, we have to follow the rules, being the town above and beyond anybody else, we have to be letter-perfect on getting all the, the permits and, you know, conservation and everything like that, so I, I don't know that going forward, it's a nice thought and a nice idea, but where would we park? And we'd have to address that issue, obviously, working with you, and is it not wetlands, because we'd have to get, go through the Conservation Commission just to see what was there, with that particular parcel, to see if we were gonna be able to bury in any rivers, streams, or anything like that.
Just like I had said, I'm, I'm not an engineer.
No, nor am I.
No, this is what I'm, but when I, I went down, I drove around the high school parking lot, they must've thought I was strange driving around over there, I drove around that parking lot, and I counted every parking space where we park currently over there. There was two hundred and twenty spaces in there, in that, in that footprint. I don't have the contractors tape measure to measure it out, but when those buildings come down, that's looking at the, at my eye, when those buildings are torn down, that footprint looks very similar to the size of the front, right by the snack shack, that we could use to do, address their parking. And I actually brought in the idea of actually increasing the amount of spaces solely for the purpose of the community gardens, 'cause there will be more attention to it, and we can also address the issue of, people are saying the increased traffic flow, as a board, any of our boards, the football, the lacrosse and soccer, we can actually, at least on the soccer, 'cause we probably the largest number down there, we can split our days up, we can do some on Saturday and some on Sundays, we do U-six, U-eight, U-ten on Saturday, U-twelve, U-fourteen, U-sixteen on Sunday. We can address and take care of that portion of the problem. In regards to the wetlands, like I said, that's, that's an engineering issue.
I don't wanna say that, Chris, 'cause that could be an issue.
Absolutely, I one-hundred percent agree.
And we might want to sit with the Conservation Commission, or, or get some ideas, if there is enough land to do what you're talking about.
Absolutely, I one-hundred percent agree with you.
All right.
I have a question, you said this is gonna be temporary, you know, it's, but also seems like you're gonna invest a lot of money to get this done, so what happens when all these fields behind the high school and next to the high school become available, and you just gotta walk away from this? I mean, are you willing to walk away from?
If that's, I mean, if we get them up, everything's up and running at the high school, I have no problem with walking away from it, you know, I'm hoping, I, maybe I have dreams of grandeur, whatever, like I said, I would, I'm hoping I get it done for close to, you know, a lot of volunteerism, that's what I'm looking for. So, I'm not looking for a huge money investment, but I'll invest what needs to be done to get the kids on the field.
Okay. Would you be willing to answer questions from the audience?
I would love to answer questions.
Could I?
I love to talk, I don't know if I'm gonna- I love to talk, I don't know if I make a tell...
Oh, they have more questions here.
I do have a couple of questions, Chris, just as far as the timing goes. So your season for 2015 is okay, because they're not going to start until December.
Exactly. You know, it's going to actually, right when the season ends is when they're going to start, that's what their, their plan is according to the bullet points from the eye.
And then hopefully, in the fall of 2016, when your season starts again, two of those fields, those two synthetic fields will be up.
That's what I've been promised, yes. But, we'll be using, losing for the lacrosse, we'll be losing the lacrosse season of 2016.
In the spring, yeah.
We'll be losing the football fields for them to train on for that season, so, because they start earlier, they start in, you know, the summer, you know.
So you're not, you're not just representing yourself, then, you're also speaking about the other sports.
I'm actually talking on behalf of, I have a nod in the back from the youth football, and I got youth lacrosse right in the front row.
Okay, okay.
Both nodding at me, so.
So, but if you, and I think, again, we have to listen to everybody, and I think everybody should have an opportunity to use the property. But, if you're looking to do something in the spring of 2016, is that what you're hoping would be the case, or?
Best case scenario, yeah, please.
Because I've walked up there, and it's not smooth, it's not, I don't think it's something you just go up there and mow and put some lines down.
No, it won't be, no, no.
So you're going to have to have some kind of a growing season, I would think, right?
Yes, depending on what, if you put down hydroseed, if you, if you take it, what we did, I did in the Holbrook project, we scraped it, put hydroseed down, and the grass was growing, especially how rich that soil will be from all the...
How long, how long did it take for that to take and...
I want to say, it was actually, I think it was one season, we waited one season for it, and it actually, and it took, so.
I'm on with Mr. Burr, mine of school building committee, and they're very aware of the disruption it would have to the youth programs, and they were going to concentrate on those two fields, that that was right up front. Did you ever have a Plan B if Griffin's Dairy wasn't there, two questions, if Griffin's Dairy wasn't there? And the second question, if you're actually going to have this ready for 2016, wouldn't you have to really kind of start on it in the spring of next year? Wouldn't you have to have it mowed and leveled?
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I mean, the more time I have, the, you know, to get any kind of construction done to it.
Just to get a square in my own head that this is what the plan would be.
Exactly, I mean, and the thing is, like I said, we're not building structures, we're not, it's taking soil, and a bulldozer out there for a couple of days, it's amazing what they can do for the land. You know, not that, I'm not saying like, for the land, make it, you know, without disrupting, I don't want to, I'm an environmental guy, so I want to have as little impact in that as possible. I just want flat fields for the kids, and a bulldozer out there for a couple of days, it's amazing what they can do with it. So the sooner the better to start that, it would definitely be helpful. Plan B, Plan B, I actually spoke with Suzanne DeJusper, she's also on the parking rec, and the Plan B was, you know, it's, there's random fields around town, and there's really, the Plan B is not a good, is not a good plan. It will not help the programs at all, any of the programs. And actually, in the packet, I also put on the last page, if you're wondering what that is, that's actually an aerial view of the East Bridgewater soccer fields, and you see how it flows with the land, it's not a eyesore, it's not, I'm not looking to put pavement down, I put crushed stone down. I want to, you know, lay down some timber from telephone poles, you know, prevent people from driving out on the field, but it's a, it's a, it's just, you drive in, you wouldn't even know it was there if you drove by it. It blends with the, the community, and they still have the area down there, there's actually in the back part of the field is some cattle, so. Thank you.
Board members all set? Anybody have any questions, Chris? Suzanne? Stand up and state your name, please.
Suzanne DeJusper, my eighty-eight Central Street, I'm the director of lacrosse, and I just want to say, for Plan B, lacrosse balls go really fast and they're really hard. So if we have a Plan B on any of the fields, it's a danger to kids walking by. We need to be on our own turf or our own land. And we're going to lose two seasons, December fifteenth, they're going to start the high school. We start our, we're actually on the field March first, that's when our season starts, it usually ends about June. So we're almost going to lose two seasons by not having fields for my youth and also for my high school. Just have one.
Any other question? I'm going to ask if anybody has any questions from the audience, they got to come up to the microphone, because we want people in TV land to see your pretty face and hear your voice. Mr. Chase, could you come up to the microphone, please? You missed that, didn't you?
Uh, fine.
Loud.
Okay, what, couple of questions that I have, is I live on Two Fifty-four Columbus Street. I bought this land, and I've lived there for the last fifty-two years, fifty-five years, and it's, it's very, very, very wet. I've seen trucks, trailer trucks, try to cross that field and go right under it. It just, it's a horribly wet land. As, my kids used to skate out there in the winter. It's, it's not an easy land to, to... My house is probably two, three hundred yards in from where Patterson Street is. Beyond that, used to be a nursery. We have beautifully dried land in that field. As soon as the new property is in, and whatever they bulldozed, they, I'm sure they knew what the heck they were doing, but the, our property now, it's lost above ten feet across the back because it's too wet to walk on. And that's been true for the last many years. So it's something that, you're not about controlling that water, I'm saying that it's not an easy job, and it's, I'm sure, a very expensive job to control it. And in a soccer field, water is not your fun. I think that's a, that's a major problem. And the only other thing that concerns me right now, and I think is probably the board. Our donor that gave us the land, he had put down what he wanted to see that land become. Have we, as a town, just forgot? Do we don't care what he said? He's given us the land.
Well, he didn't give it to us.
He bought it.
He purchased it.
Uh, it's a prescient point. The town got a good deal, let's put it that way.
We can get into specifics of the good deal we got, but we got a good deal because we gave them tax breaks the whole, you know, through the years that they, you know, they operated the farm, so.
But he did put down in his will, when he willed it to the town.
It wasn't willed to the town.
It wasn't?
The town bought the property. He, I mean, we can go into the history of the property, he was going to sell, the Griffin family was going to sell the property to a developer in town to develop the land, I think it was condos at the time.
Condos, I think, was what was contemplated, yes.
And the town chose to match the offer.
They have a first option, because it was agricultural land, so the town had that first option, and they exercised the option to purchase it.
To address your issue about the water, like I said, I'm not a engineer, I'd leave it up to the professionals, if they say it's too wet, we can't use, is this the only piece of land that we can think, where we could all keep the kids together? If it's an issue and they say we can't use it, we can't use it, you know, but it's outside of my realm of knowledge.
It's a full-blown river.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Walsh, in the back there? Thank you for coming up to the microphone.
My name's Richard Hannah, Dick Hannah, stop smiling, Michael. I go back a long way with the soccer league, with your stepsisters playing for me. I am the community person that goes down and cuts the grass down at the gardens, we've been down there about four years. My question is, when this is built, because we ran into this with the soccer league back in the eighties, when this is built, who's going to control it?
Be the parking rec, it's all the way to town.
Right, so the parking rec is going to control it, just like behind the high school. So, things that you're forgetting, you have spring soccer, so there'll be games down there during the spring, not as many as in the fall, but you do have them. You also have leagues behind the high school, adult soccer, men's, ladies, and you've had club teams play down there. It seems to, and I'm not throwing any stones at anybody out there, but it seems like when the parking rec can make some money, they'll do it. So they'll charge fifty, hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred dollars, whatever they get today for those fields. So, just besides, I want a place for these kids to play, don't get me wrong, but I'm not too sure that's a good idea down here. Mike picked up on parking, now, is your parking still going to be where the front of it is between Mary Griffin's and Esther Griffin's house?
I don't know Mary, Esther.
Okay, this is the way you drive into it?
Yeah, I went down and, I've been in and out of that property several times in the last, like, about six weeks.
You're running into problems that you don't even know you're getting into. Carrie talked about two wells, one of the wells is open, and you're going to have to fill it, you're going to have to collapse it, it's a dangerous situation. Because I cut the grass down there for the farmers market too, and I pushed back in there. There is going to be obstacles that you don't even dream about right now, that I've seen down there. Over four years, we have repositioned that garden, Andy remembers that, because the front end is flooded, because the flood plain is changing up there, because we don't have cows, or we're not cutting it. Now, Mr. Delprey was up there, and he cut it this past year, he doesn't plan to, I guess, I'm not on any boards, I'm just go up and I cut grass, okay? And from what I understand, there probably would have to be another contract with him, but he was not intending to take hay out of there until next year, because the hay, the grass has been sitting like this for seven, eight, nine years, and it's not good for anything. But his intention was hopefully that he would be able to hay it and bring it back to his farm up in Summer Street. So, that would be my question about the parking rec. The other thing I just want to bring up, you make a comment that you want to try to keep the kids together, let me tell you a little story. I'm telling you history, all right? Back in the eighties, boys used to play on Sundays, girls used to play on Saturdays. I was the vice president, I figured out a way by doing the setup with the help of Barbie Loans back there, and a few other people, we figured out how we could do it all in one place at one time. Because we had the lapoints with thirty-two kids, that had, you know, boys up there on Sundays, I go, no, let me hear, they'll kill me, Glenn. And some were on Saturdays, and we got them all together. Now, you make a point that that's what you'd like to keep, now, you just made a point that you are not against splitting up the kids for Sundays and Saturdays up there. I don't think you understand the traffic castles that are up there, being from the farmers market, we have some dangerous situations. That road is a lot smaller than eighteen, you don't have a set of lights at the front of it, like you do at the high school, to get the traffic in and out of there. I don't think that area, and just think, if everybody knows where Griffin's guy, farmers, the front of it, the size of that high school pocket on the left is going in there, all right? Now, I used to paint lines, all right? Every car space is two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, he wants two-hundred of them. And then you need twenty-two to twenty-four feet wide for roadways in between them. So either, you know, I think it's two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet wide here, you'll take up the whole front, and you go back into part of the farm for parking. Then you're going to get into problems when we're up there on Saturdays with the farmers market, it's a very, it's not, it's semi-safe. We have people that we try to have not park on the street, but they do. One of our own selectmen parked on the street over one of our signs, so I'm not even going to get into that, okay? And, by putting another hundred-and-twenty to hundred-and-sixty cars in there on a, on a Saturday, I know, you know, you don't start until the second week of September, and we're out of there by the end, but still, it's not going to be a safe condition up there.
In an effort to keep this positive, I know Mr. Walsh stated that, you know, he doesn't have all the buzzword out, he's really just kind of throwing it out there right now, so I just want to, you know, defend Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, well, I'm just...
And we want to hear, you know, we want to hear everything that everybody wants to do up there, so.
And I think the other thing is, this is part of the whole process to send it to Old Colony Planning Council, is it even feasible for this stuff to work together? But it's certainly something I think we should look at, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming to the microphone and name dropping pretty much everybody in town, so thank you.
I'm good at that, I work for a phone company.
Does anybody have any else, other questions from Mr. Walsh? Nope? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim James Dombrowski, would you like to step up to the microphone? This is one of the people that we have to put the time limit on, so.
Let me ask any questions, I can put this one back up. Dombrowski, twenty-eight Temple Street, I was a member of the original study committee, and I'm also the founding member of the group called Save Griffin's Farm. And Save Griffin's Farm group has a three-pronged mission. One, to advocate for the wetlands that are present on Griffin's farm. Two, advocate for the way of life being agriculture. And three, advocate for the people who are but the property and concern citizens who want to be informed of what's going on there. Over the years, we've had many discussions, the school department and I had a very lively debate. When we purchased this property in nineteen ninety-eight, there was one article that was passed, and I hope Mr. Coyle remembers that, that was Article Number Thirty-two. It not only created the study committee, but it did, and I quote, "Voted to authorize, instruct, and direct the board of selectmen of the town of Abington to seek and receive such grants from the County of Plymouth, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the United States Government, any subdivision thereof, or any private nonprofit organization as may be necessary to obtain funds for the purchase of any or improvements to the land." We asked the question to speak with the grant writer, we never did hear any word. The town never spoke to anyone about applying for grants. There is grant money available. If you want, you can ask the question on your time on that one. Back in two thousand and seven, the school department and I had a very lively discussion about Griffin's Farm. During that period of time, we contested the ANRAD plan, which is an abbreviated notice of resource delineation for that property. We hired a professional wetland scientist to assist us. The plans that you see here, in the two thousand and five one, have some inaccuracies. The town received, I believe I gave to Rick a copy of the NRCS, which stands for the National Resource Conservation Service Soil Conservation Survey. It was issued to the town. And in there, it specifies the three types of soils that were found on Griffin's Dairy. The three types being, the scientific name is called squambskut, eldridge, and scarborough. Mr. Walsh, remember those three names, because they're very important to you when you want to put in the soccer field or any playfield. The first soil is called squambskut, which contains eighteen-point-four acres of the existing thirty-two acres in Abington. That represents fifty-nine percent of the land. It's a hydric soil, it's a wetlands soil. The next one is called scarborough. It's defined as mucky peat, consists of eleven percent of the property up there, that's also considered hydric or a wetland soil. The remaining soil, which is less than thirty percent of the property up there, is called eldridge, which is a fine sandy loom, three percent slope. Also has what they call hydric inclusions, meaning that it may contain some areas of wetland soils. If you go online, you can get a copy of the eldridge soils from the NRCS, the Soil Conservation Service, I have a copy of their map. I sent a copy to the board of selectmen, and you all should have a copy of that. It shows the outline of the soils on Griffin's Farm, that's pertinent, because the Old Colony Planning Council is going to reuse the same information. The three soils that I mentioned are also present on the farm. If you look on the very top here where he's proposing, that's considered an upland. This is considered a wetland soil in the middle. And this area called Two Twenty-One B consisted of the main farm, the house, and the back portion of the farm is also considered upland. It's considered important farmland soils. Once you lose it, you've lost it forever. Now, he's talking about hydroseeding and bulldozing, leveling, things of this nature, once it's gone, it's gone forever, it's a permanent alteration. The streams that you see present on the site, they're not all fully defined, there are more. Mr. Donovan and I had a lively discussion about what constitutes definition of a stream. I can make Mr. Franny's eyes roll when I call it regulation, so I'll do it. Three ten CMR, ten-point-oh-four, definition of a stream. It's called a hydraulic gradient, if it has a tendency to flow water in a direction or channelize it, it's classified as a stream. When it has upland-supporting wetlands... When it has upland supporting wetlands, it becomes a protectable resource. Every one of the streams on Griffin's dairy is a protectable resource. You go through the report that was given to the school department by their assigned professional wetland scientist, Eleanor White. She mentioned in her report several streams located on Griffin's dairy. That, you should also have that information. Again, as I mentioned, the plans here do not represent all the wetlands. If you look back at the FEMA floodplain that the town approved in 2012, you will notice that the entire area of Bellow Circle now contains a FEMA floodplain. I argued that with Mr. Schaefer back in 2007, and all the people on the middle school site committee at that particular time. When you go through, you can also go online, you can go onto the DEP Wetlands Aerial Photos. This is a nice photograph. The dark lines represent the streams in areas where it ponds. Behind Mr. Chase's house, this area right in here, it ponds, they're all classified as wetlands. You have to understand what the Wetlands Protection Act requires. You're gonna be required to file a notice of intent. You mentioned Holbrook. I used to be the conservation officer over there, so I know what I'm talking about. I also sat on the Conservation Commission and dealt with the regulations. So I strongly suggest when you get into some of these issues, understand what the regulations call for. I'd be more than happy to help you understand them and explain them to you. Wetland Strategies was the name of the company for the school that did their survey and did their report. You should also have a copy of that. If you don't, that's pertinent information. I'd be more than happy to provide Rick a copy so he can provide it to you. It's information that you're gonna be using when Old Colony Planning Council does their review. So I mentioned soils. I mentioned available wetlands reports. They're not gonna go out there and do a wetland survey for you, nor are they gonna do topographic plans for you. Speak about topography a little bit. Patterson Street is elevation 113 at the street. Plummer Street, elevation 113 at the street. The stream, French's stream in the back, elevation 106.7. It's a very slope, shallow slope going from front to back. All the streams that you have on site, the bordering vegetated wetlands, all have what they call land subject to flooding. Griffin's farm has not been determined. It has not been studied. So now you're taking all the soils, you're taking the environmental factors. Let's speak about the last and final thing that's gonna be an obstacle to this.
Mr. Dombrowski, I hate to interrupt you here, but I say that we want to know what your vision is, you know?
My vision is-
We want to be positive. We want to hear what you want to do, not what you don't want people to do.
What I'd like to see is remain farming.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's the ultimate goal.
Okay.
It doesn't impact on traffic, which is another thing that Old Colony Planning Council's gonna have to deal with. That's Plymouth Street.
I know where it is.
Looking down. The other one I have is looking at Patterson Street, a very dangerous intersection. You have the building-
Jim, can I ask you, as far as farming goes, what type of farming do you want? A dairy farm? Do you want-
John Horster was interested in leasing the farm.
For what purpose?
For the purpose of bringing on a young herd. Not dairy farming. You never see the day of milk production on Griffin's dairy again for why?
So what would these, what would this herd be for?
Simply to raise a young herd.
For?
To implement in his herd down in Norwell. Separate the milk production from the young herd. Now, you have to understand what farming requires. You have to have at least five contiguous acres. You start taking away, now you're gonna lessen the interest that any farmer has in their property. You take away land, who's gonna be interested in it?
Well, okay, so my question would be, if it's five continuous acres, how big a herd would that sustain? And would it be something that he would still be interested in?
You're talking one cow per half acre, per acre.
Okay. So, did you have conversations with Horster yourself?
I've talked to John Horster.
So how big a herd?
Kerry Bates. We had an onsite meeting with Mr. Horster. We had a tour of his farm.
Okay. So how big a herd would he want if he was interested in Abington?
Probably looking at about 20 cows at least.
At a half an acre?
Originally, what I believe Griffin's originally had was about 21 to 25 cows.
At a half an acre a cow, you said?
Well, one per acre.
One per acre.
How long ago was this meeting, Jim?
We had a meeting-
June 2013, there was a tour of-
We just had one this year.
Excuse me. Carolyn Bates, we went over the circle. The tour of the Horster farm included Dari Jamison was there, Senator John Keenan, Ronnie Jensen was there, Mr. Dombrowski, Mr. Taylor, myself. And there was a tour of the farm. I did not hear any indication from Mr. Horster that he was particularly interested at this time, or at that time. It was simply a tour of the farm. And I did give a report to Arndt.
John Horster and I had a discussion, and he was also before the Conservation Commission at one time, discussing what he was referring to. Former town manager John Deastino had dreams of having a storefront and the cows go in there. Now, understand that the town can get grant money if it is agricultural land. You have the ability to sell off the development rights, retain it as agricultural land, still retain it, the ownership of it, and give you seed money for restoring the farm.
Okay, so your group wants to keep it agriculture?
We want to keep it as agriculture.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
No, just a comment. I think we're getting a little bit off point here on the whole thing, that the idea of this committee, Jim, and I do have an open, Abbott and Open Space Recreation Plan 2014 in front of me, and it was the Old Colony Planning Council, it does mention the topography and all that in there.
Yep.
But the point of this meeting was to get the residents' input into what their dreams were, understanding that some of those might not be possible. I'll be willing to work with Mr. Walsh to either eliminate up or down. I don't hold a lot of confidence that it's gonna pass, Chris, to be honest with you. But no, no harm, no foul. We'll look at it, all right? And we ought to be able to put that to sleep, so it's gone, it's off the table, not there anymore. We ought to talk to Mr. Horster once and for all, because I'm sick and tired of hearing this farmer, this farmer that's gonna come in and lease the land and put cattle out there. And I do commercial refrigeration. I grew up in an era where we used to do a lot of small local farms. And it broke my heart to go to these people and see them be putting out of business, one after the other, the other. The last one is peaceful memories. There's an empty barn over there, his herd is gone, he gets all his dairy products from New Hampshire. So if Mr. Horster wants to come, and God love him if he wants to, but I think we should have an idea of what type of money we're gonna get from him, and if he really has a serious interest in what he wants to do. And then we can take that off the table. In the meantime, we should be able to tell the Old Colony Planning Council, this is what we know, and this is what the resident would like. Can you tell us what's possible? And to work with him, you have some legitimate concerns, and I agree with you. The house that Mr. Chase talked about is the house right next to, I mean, the truck that sank in the ground. The house that's actually located right next to Benny Griffin on Patterson Street, which used to be located up by St. Bridget's Church and the parking lot. And they moved that house, and as they moved it, they came down and they went and they took it to the field, and the field was so wet that the truck sank. And they had a heck of a thing. So, yeah, but I hate to ramble on like that, but the point is, I think tonight's meeting, we're supposed to be getting information on, not arguing over what to, we gotta put those issues to sleep. And you have a legitimate issue, Jim, I'm not saying that. But I think we ought to hear some of the residents and what they'd like to see up there, and then we can give that information to the planning council, and then we can proceed and see if it's viable.
Well, Mr. Horster expressed an interest in leasing the property long term.
Okay.
Mr. Horster is not gonna invest millions of dollars. He's gonna require grant money in order to do this. And nor do I think that the Town of Abington is gonna spend thousands of dollars, of tax dollars, to restore the property. There has to be a method to do it, and the best way to do it is through grants. There is grant money out there for agriculture, but the land has to be under agricultural usage.
Okay.
That's the key to it. Now, you mentioned about farms going out. God love Mr. Horster, he's got a business down there that's flourishing. He's doing fantastic down there. In fact, he can't keep up with the demand, which is one of the reasons why he's looking to expand.
If Mr. Horster comes to Abington, he would have to go out to bid. The whole, you can't just pick, you're gonna do it. This is the town, it's town property. Am I correct in assuming that?
There would have to be some procurement process, right?
Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm in Goodyear. I have some questions. I'm also the president of Abington Soccer. I just wanted to clarify a couple things. First and foremost-
Ed, can you just come up here, just so people can hear you at home also? Do you have a question for Mr. Dombrowski?
I do have a question. I just wanted to make a statement real quick. I just want to clarify a couple things. We do want to lease the property long term. We're looking forward to hopefully having that property for quite some time. We have a large group of kids, obviously, there's a lot of parents that are involved in this, there's a lot of other programs that are involved in this. And I just wanted to, the question I actually have is, what benefit do we as taxpayers and as a community get from another individual renting our property versus our own kids and our own families using that property for the benefit of our town? That's my question. So if somebody can answer that, that would be great.
I think there's a big difference you have to look at when you're looking at the educational aspect of agriculture. Norfolk Agriculture School is interested in coming and bringing a satellite school. I believe Bristol County is also interested in bringing a satellite school. So there is interest in it.
How do we benefit from that? That was my question. How do we benefit?
How do we, you're looking at financial gain?
What's the benefit to us versus us using those fields for our children? That's my question. This is town-owned property, so what do we benefit from?
Correct. If, you're talking-
We get it.
You're referring to leasing the property for recreational use versus leasing it for agricultural use. So what's the difference?
What's the benefit to us?
What's the benefit?
Our benefit is to us that we use it because our kids get to use it and stay in town and have a flourish.
You're looking at the benefit for recreational use, I'm looking at the benefit for agricultural use.
What's the benefit to the town is what I'm asking you for agricultural use. What is the benefit to the town?
Lease income and education.
So what do you think, John?
Excuse me?
What would the lease income be?
Whatever the town negotiates.
With Mr. Horster?
Correct. Or any farmer.
Or any farmer, I guess.
Not particularly Mr. Horster. Anyone who comes out there to lease the property would go through a process. I don't know what type of price you would want to put on it, how much you want to lease it for. Have to evaluate what's out there.
We, not you.
We, the town.
The town.
Yes.
Any other questions from the-
When I say we, I mentioned, I refer to the town, Ken.
Well, when something's bad, it's always you, but when it's-
You do it, you juggle.
Yes, sir. Can you come to the microphone, please? Thank you. You probably can, but. Do you have a question for Ms. Dombrowski?
Yeah. Jake O'Neil, Levin Mulberry Drive. I have one question about, you mentioned the wetlands, and yeah, the soccer, lacrosse, football are gonna have some unknowns to deal with, but that's a cost that they're willing to undertake. You would mention that if we were gonna lease this, that's a cost that the town would have to undertake, correct? Because if you can't, you know, run on it as is, you sure as, you can't have a cow walk on it.
Why?
Because they're gonna make it muddy and sink as well. So if there's wetlands issues, who's gonna foot that cost? Is that gonna be a town cost?
Okay. How old is the town now?
350.
300, how many years?
302.
302 years. How many years has a farm been on this property better than 302 years?
I don't say cows have had any heat.
Always have had cows on it. Used to have chickens, used to have a horse.
You've never seen a cow up there, Mike? I live right down the street.
Excuse me?
One, five, Mike.
Since when?
Forty-two years.
Forty-two years? You've never seen a cow?
Not once. I live right down the street.
All right, this is, what's happening is what I do not want to happen, okay? Honestly. Please.
Can I just, who's gonna have to pay for any wetlands work to have to, would that be the town or whoever leases it?
I think it depends upon what-
Depending on the nature. Someone's gonna have to file a notice of intent if you're gonna change the fields to construct recreational fields on it. If you're gonna farm it, there's another process. The one thing that the Wetlands Protection Act has contained within the regulations is leniency for usage as farming. Does not provide leniency when it comes to recreation. Understand that difference. You can farm in wetlands, but you cannot construct fields without replication in wetlands. Two different applications. Cow can go in there and eat the grass, but you can't physically go in there and change that grass.
Any other questions for Mr. Dombrowski's vision of agriculture up there with the property? Nope? All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Our next speaker, and I know that Bob came in a little bit late, I'd like to remind you, Bob. Bob Taylor, next speaker, if you want to come up. We want to hear your vision, what you would like to see on this property, not what you don't want to see, and there's a time limit, Mr. Taylor.
I hope you don't mind if I can use your picture for a second. I really appreciate that. Mr. Coyle, I want to thank you, I want to thank the selectmen, I want to thank the town for allowing us to have this meeting tonight. I have to say that, you just gotta give me a second. I've been very busy for the last three days. I want to start off by saying one thing, if I may. I've never been against the school. I've never been against the senior center. I've never been against the soccer fields. Matter of fact, I'm in support of you, and I do have a solution. I've been making a lot of calls and dealing with a lot of people. So bear with me for a minute if you can. First of all, we need to go back to May 4th of 1998. It's a very interesting year. I want to give this to the chairman.
Mr. Taylor, what do you want to see up on that property?
I'm sorry, but there's a purpose I'm leading up to.
Well, your time's running out.
You gotta give me a few minutes.
I don't have to do anything.
Give me a few minutes, and I'm trying to-
Five minutes.
Workable solution, if I may. I happen to be speaking to a lot of people today. One of the persons I spoke to was school superintendent. I had a very interesting chat with him. I do have a picture of the diagram of the four multipurpose fields along with the Riley Field. I know that at one point, we were talking about a temporary situation versus a permanent situation. I know that the superintendent has talked to Franny about what his thoughts are about the Brockton Ave property, 15 acres to be exact. Seven of them are usable. We have underutilized fields in the town. I think it's a co-partnership between the selectmen, the park and rec, the conservation, the open space committee to come up with a workable solution. But there's one thing I know for sure. I challenge everybody in this room to really look at this book. It tells you about what you can have and what you do have. It's the way you utilize it. Now, I happen to be up at South Field today, and there's something there, just like at Griffin's Dairy, frozen in time. It's Shea Field Fitness Center, but what's next to it is something that was told to me by somebody who used to work in the selectmen's office from the South Redevelopment Authority. As I came home today, I got a call from the master developer, LNR Starwood, and they're gonna get back to me tomorrow. And what you have is a usable, nonexistent field that hasn't been used in a while, and it's a soccer field.
Mr. Taylor, we're talking about Griffin's Dairy.
I understand, but I'm trying to- I understand, but I'm trying to...
But you're not talking about it. You're talking about the airbase.
No, but I'm trying to give you solutions to where you can go.
We don't care about the solutions...
But my point of the matter is...
But get to it.
The point of the matter is, Patterson is a very interesting spot. I happen to live exactly where you're gonna put the field. We have a problem with flooding. We have a problem with traffic. And all due respect to the selectmen and the town manager and to everybody in this group, we have a problem with water. About five years ago, I had six inches of water in my home. Now, there is a group of people who have bought the property. I'm one of them. I've lived there for fifteen years, approximately. Jimmy Griffin's home is at the end of Charles, which is exactly where you put in the field. Now, there is a problem there. Jimmy Dombrowski tried to explain it, but most of all, I brought the Griffin's Dairy group along with a selectwoman, Senator Keating, along with the assistant town manager just to have an open mind. And honestly, we put a rail trail not too far from there, a sewer bed, another suitable spot for a soccer field, parking, and most of all, to get back to one place I was trying to mention, this parking there, too. But the problem is traffic. On any given day between four and five, coming down by St. Bridgetts, you run into issues with traffic. Now, we throw two to three hundred more cars. Where are you gonna park them? That's another question. Patterson doesn't have suitable parking, and Griffin's Dairy doesn't, and Shirley Plymouth Street doesn't have it. So now you're throwing another problem into the mix. Now, I'm here to give you a solution, but the chairman here is not allowing me to give you the way of solving the problem. You really have to work together as a group. That's what it's all about, working together to solve the problem. It's not about any need but the school and the needs of the child. And the child is a soccer field. He has to have a place to play. Now, honestly, I've worked on this for three days. I've made numerous calls, and I've made numerous correspondence with people in the town, and you really have to look at the unusable or underutilized fields in the town, and it happens to be in this book that the selectmen just showed you. I have a copy, and I've read it. But most of all, there are solutions where everybody has to work together as a group. Now, the selectmen have a problem, and so don't I. I abut the property, and so does about a hundred and fifty abutters. And we deal with water. Underground streams that come from Rockland come underneath the property and go down to South Weymouth Naval. Now, I'm leaving here, and I'm going to South Field. I'm gonna give you a field. I'm gonna work on it hard for the kids of the town of Abington. Honestly, I'm in the best position.
Can I just go in there for a second? You're talking about, like, just... I just want...
Yes.
...clear thought. You're talking about one field?
No, it's a field double in size of what you have here, in the sense that you can have two soccer fields together.
Okay. We're, because of soccer, because of the amount of kids, because of lacrosse, because of football, we are looking for six fields.
I understand that.
So two fields is not going to...
No, I understand that. That's... You're a hundred percent right. But you do have multipurpose fields at most of these schools. It's just the way you use them and how you implement them.
So, Mr. Taylor, your five minutes is well up, okay? Can you tell us what you want to do on the Griffin's Dairy property?
I understand that, but it's not...
No, you don't understand.
It's not suitable for an athletic field, sir.
Okay, good. What do you want up there?
It's something that I tried to bring across, and I invited a selectman...
Tom.
...who is not here tonight, and a person from the Griffin's Dairy Committee, an assistant town manager. And honestly, I want what the town wants, and I want to educate people what could be there, meaning if it's done right, the town gets $400,000 up front, and then the town gets to control it, and then somebody comes in...
Excuse me. There's no backing up. Can I please interrupt you?
Listen, listen.
I came here to talk about an athletic field.
He's getting to his point, I think.
Really?
Bob.
I came here to talk about an athletic field.
No, wait, wait, wait. We're not talking about soccer fields right now. We want to know what people want to do on the property.
Right.
I understand...
Do you have anything to back those numbers up for one?
It doesn't matter. Let him finish.
Okay.
Quickly.
You know what? I don't think Bob was here at the beginning of the meeting when we had the open introduction. I think you missed part of what we talked about in the very beginning of it.
I apologize for any...
I know you do, but we've gone over a lot. We've talked about the fields and stuff.
And I will say one thing to you, Frenny.
What?
I'm hearing impaired. I'm sorry I didn't hear what you have to say. But there's one thing I was trying to get my point across was, I'm in favor of getting soccer fields for these kids.
But Bob, the whole purpose...
I'm not against that.
The whole purpose of the meeting tonight is...
It's Griffin's Dairy.
Yes. Well, to find out if, what the people in the town, at least here, would like to...
But honestly, they have to be educated.
Let me finish, please. What people would like to see done with Griffin's Dairy. Now, we've heard from soccer people. We've heard from lacrosse people, football people. They'd like to see playing fields. We've heard from Mr. Dombrowski. He'd like to see it remain agricultural. We're gonna hear from other people tell us what they'd like to have.
I'll tell you what John Horst...
So why don't... Can you just tell... You want it to be a farm?
No, I told John... I'll tell you what John Horstroom told me at the farm. He told me that, yes, he would like to have small huffers there, but mostly he would like to grow vegetables on the property.
I don't really...
I would like to have...
Bob, I don't really care about what Mr. Hornstrom has to say. I'd rather have... I'd rather listen to what you have to say. You would like to see done with the farm. If you have any idea at all, if not, then we should move on to the next speaker and let them come in.
I took the time to put together an open committee to come with an open mind. As far as the...
Bob, would you like to... Just, it's not a hard question. Would you like to see it remain agricultural? Would you like to see a mixed use?
I'd like to see it remain agricultural, and I'd like the town to benefit financially.
Okay.
But I also thought I could help out with the soccer field.
You can meet with them separately.
I apologize if that's not what you want me to say.
No, I think that's great. And you know what? We may have to go that route if we can't put fields up there. But this... Tonight is just a meeting for us to get an indication of what people would like to use the property for, and if in fact it can even be done when we send it over to Old Colony Planning Council to let us know.
I'll tell you right now, if you put a soccer field on the property and not agriculture...
Any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Audience, questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Lorraine Ryerson, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, please. I apologize if I appear confrontational, but, you know, I want this to be positive, and it's not turning out that way right now. But I have a feeling that Lorraine Ryerson, representing Sage Committee... Uh-oh, she's gotta hand out.
You won't need the timer. She's very shy. Lorraine Ryerson, 162 Limwood Street, Council on Aging, Griffin Dairy Committee, Sage Committee, Community Garden. And that's what I'm here to talk about. Our community garden's been going... This will be our fifth year we're going into it. We started out with about... Started out with about a dozen, have... We're up to twenty-nine in one compost site. We cannot get it organically certified because the state will not do a community garden. However, we ask all the members who have gardens there, we organically manage it. So therefore, we have no pesticides, no herbicides, and no commercial fertilizer. And I think you're gonna feel where I'm going here. If we have... I just ask you to be very, very careful when we bring in the soccer fields. And like I said, I'm on the Griffin's Dairy Committee. We wanted two recreational fields. I'm very concerned with the commercial fertilizers that will be used, just because... You can tell I'm very passionate about our gardens and not having it, and I feel it helps everybody all the way around not to be consuming this. When we started out, the gardens were about forty feet closer to Plymouth Street than where they are now. It got to the point where you would walk into them. As time went on, the water backed up more and more, and you would physically go up to your ankles in the gardens closer to Plymouth Street. So as they were saying, it is getting wetter and wetter. It definitely is getting wetter and wetter. Like, we're about forty feet farther away, farther in. How well are the community gardens doing? We had one man with a twelve-by-fifteen plot that took in over two-hundred pounds of produce off of his little spot. He weighed everything. They weighed the flowers off of the squash plants that they were eating, anything they ate. They weighed before they took it, and I thought that was very impressive. And like I said, we've got twenty-nine spots, one compost. And my hope from you is to help protect us. We would like to stay there, and I don't think there's any talk of us going away. I don't feel you're gonna tell us we have to leave there or anything like that. I just want you to please protect us.
Sure. Thank you, Lorraine.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on the board? Andy?
Have you plans to expand beyond the twenty-nine?
We already have.
No, beyond where you are now. You do. How many...
It's already been done. It's already been plowed for next year.
How many are you looking at for next year?
It depends on how many applicants we get. That's how the size of the gardens... Say we get the exact same number we have this year, we'll just expand on the sizes of the individual gardens.
So the plot itself is bigger than what it was previously?
Yes, yes. Yes, it is. And when they were talking about somebody getting stuck, the gentleman that offers to do all our plowing and disking for us, he got stuck up there for about four hours this year with his front-end loader, trying to, you know, trying to level the gardens.
Do you have any concerns, any complaints from people who use the garden about parking or any of that sort of thing?
Not at this point.
Yeah, it's not been...
No. Right. The complaints for the parking would come off of the farmer's market.
Is that an issue?
Definitely. Definitely. We... The past town manager asked us to not allow people to pack out on Plymouth Street, so we put all no-parking signs up, and the next selectman drove over with them and packed.
Wow, whatever that person is, that's the second time.
But, yes, it is. And we have to be really careful because people are gonna be people when they're driving, and even though they're in and out of the... Yeah, we know who it is.
Has to be getting in. She said "X" selectman.
I approached him on it the next day. Going in and out of there is very narrow, so we have to make sure they push the tents back far enough so people have plenty of room to walk on the grass to get back and forth from the parking spots and so forth. And people come by and they're in a hurry, you know? So, yes, that is an issue up there.
This is more for the town manager. Once those two buildings come down, is that gonna expand the possibility for parking up there?
Yes, yes. I think that was kind of what was envisioned, is that it would... But again, keeping it as, you know, rural and, you know, we're not looking at...
You're not gonna pay, but I mean, just...
No, we are, right.
Okay.
Thanks. So, Lorraine, your vision is to keep it agriculture and limit the use of pesticides on the property, basically?
I would ask that you protect us. Yes, that is true. Keep it agriculture, no. I would like to see some... I would like to see some recreation.
You said some, a couple of...
Yes, almost definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Yes, sir?
Mine's more common. One of the reasons why I feel you're asking is to just tell them. You feel the same way as I feel about the...
I know you do, Chris. Yes.
And one of the reasons why I actually would suggest that we push it more towards the passing side is to give you plenty of space, but not at the favor, because I think it's phenomenal if you're growing plants. So that's... I just want to make sure... I don't want people to think I'm trying to go up there and steal them. That's not my intent at all. My intent is to give you the room. That's why initially I was thinking of going behind the big block.
Yes, I know your word, yes.
And then I shifted it and gave you the space so you could experience.
Chris, I had a lot of... Being on the Griffin's Dairy Committee, I had a lot of problems voting against you. And they know I did. I asked them to wait, because I'm the newest member, and I wanted to look into it more and so forth and so on. But the... Where you had proposed it that night and the ninety parking spaces, I... Yeah, I had trouble with that.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Ryerson? Yes, ma'am. Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, Nadine Hill, 292 Plymouth Street. I just want to mention, if we have cows back there, wouldn't that help, you know, the farm, like, with the manure?
You didn't have to say that. We knew where you were going with that.
What I'd like to see out there is definitely cows and farming and...
And you're on a butter, correct?
I am on a butter. Yes, I am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Ryerson? All right, our next speaker. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I thought you would need the timer.
You were close, though, actually. Ann Riley would like to come up, former selectwoman, many years ago.
Mrs. Riley's not the one who ran over the...
No, no, no.
It wasn't me. No, no.
Welcome. Thank you.
Ann Riley, 262 Adam Street. I wanted to give you my vision of what I would like to see of Griffin's Dairy. We purchased this wonderful piece of property from Mary Griffin, who's here, and the rest of the Griffin family, in 1998 as we know. Thirty-five point thirty-two acres are in Abington, and twenty-seven point sixty-two acres are in Rockland. This land was purchased at the time for public purposes, including open space and recreation. That's how it was proposed to the town, and that's what we voted. I'd like to compare this area to the Pope John Paul II Park Reservation, the former landfill and the drive-in theater in Nupontet in the area of Dorchester. That is comprised of sixty-six acres. That's the area that you see on the right-hand side of the Southeast Expressway, Route 93 going north into Boston. This area provides multiple fields for soccer and baseball, and we would add lacrosse and football, playground area, picnic areas, walking and running trails, opportunities for birdwatching and kite flying, and an area for parking cars. We could also provide for all of these activities, perhaps on a smaller scale, but still provide for our community garden. That is a very important aspect for the town of Abington. I think everybody that's been involved and has seen the wonderful results of that has been very pleased with what's going on. I do believe that the first step to accomplish the best use of this property is to have the Old Colony Planning Council draw a plan for the entire site, so that we can utilize it to provide for all the uses that I have mentioned. I hope that the town of Abington will consider this site for open space, community gardens, recreation, and fully utilize the acreage available. I personally don't think that we should be landlords. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Riley? The audience, any questions? Thank you, that's actually a beautiful vision, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you. Yep. Bill and Susan Weaver, the Weavers present? Come on down. Did he just throw you onto the bus and say, "You're talking"?
I don't know. My name's Susan Weaver, I live on Plymouth Street in Abington. And, as you know, that's 58, and it's terribly busy with traffic and all that. I love to walk, and it's tough to walk along Plymouth Street, and somebody lost a porch, and a guy came up on my front lawn and flipped over. I mean, I know there's a sidewalk there and all that, but I have grandkids, too. And I, my vision would be to take Griffins and make some loops, loop trails out there. I don't think the cost would be, it would require the town mow to go out there and keep it up with it once a week or so during the mowing season. If you're familiar with Bay Farm in Duxbury, it's a farm, much like Griffin's, and it's got low wetlands, and it's got, you know, but it's a farm. And they took and they cut it out, cut out some trails there, and I, you know, and that keeps the ticks down. I mean, I love to walk out there, but tick season out there is, is wild if the, if the grass gets real high. And, you know, there, if there is some wetlands, I mean, I could see, when I walk out there, I can see the possibility of maybe three loops, three loop trails, but you have to plant them around the high ground. And there is, to get to one of them, the Patterson one, you'd have to construct a, some kind of minor type of bridge over a, what I call a drainage ditch, and just found out it's considered a stream because it flows. You know, maybe four feet, five, six feet across. It's, no, I'm not talking major construction. But, you know, that and mowing. And if there was a, you know, if there was an expense and the town was, money was a real issue, I mean, it seems to me, it used to be, hey, then, I'm 63, I do remember when there were cows and Griffins. And I remember when they stopped the cows and just went to processing the milk and doing the hay, and it seems to me, hay is a renewable resource, and I don't think it requires pesticides. I am organic myself, I don't know where the lady went, but, you know, I mean, so it just seemed like a good idea to me, and so I just wanted to put that on...
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Quickly before I, oh, did you want, you all set? Okay. Quickly before we take anyone from the audience who wants to speak, I'm going to speak upon our, the recommendations from the First Griffins Dairy Committee. And what we had suggesting components in a multi-use plan, anyone who was what Griffin's Park, we called it Griffin's Park because we thought it sounded neat, has seen the potential of more than 70 acres. It's also important to remember that open spaces of value that is impossible to put a price tag on. Below is what we are recommending as the best uses of Griffin's Park. Paths and trails, trail systems along streams and connecting Abington's open space to those in adjacent communities for walking, hiking, bicycling, cross-country skiing, and rollerblading. A town garden, which has come to fruition, an established area where residents could work, apply to land to raise vegetables and flowers. A barn, we had hoped to keep the integrity of Griffin's Farm. We feel strongly that every attempt should be made to save, restore, and utilize the barn, unfortunately, that has fallen by the wayside. We, we hoped to use the barn and the farm for a variety of uses, including educational, vocational, historical, a petting zoo, agricultural, forage programs. And the other part of the component would be open recreational space for things such as multi-use athletic fields, outdoor education, nature study center, a pavilion, a picnic area, ice skating rink, there's been several mentions of that it does flood there and it would be great for ice skating, a totlot, a dog-walking area, and for golf. And to achieve those goals, our committee made one very simple proposition, and we recommended that a group called the Trustees of Griffin Park be set up to oversee the property. And what I'd like to explain is that in order to move forward, the Griffin's Dairy Committee strongly recommends, in the best interest of the town and of the property, that it be entrusted to a newly created separate group. It's important to create an entity that has control, custody, and will care for the property. This group should be able to apply for and obtain grants, charge fees, solicit donations, spend money, and basically have the power to run this park efficiently. It is our hope that the town ends up with a site that will become a destination for families in neighboring towns and a reason why people live and stay in Abington. Our vision of Parket has activities and events year-round for people of all ages. Our committee wants to ensure that Griffin's Park is properly maintained and cared for and will remain a symbol of Abington's history and pride. It is too valuable an asset not to have its own overseers. The board should be made up of people that are knowledgeable in business, agriculture, recreation, fundraising, a board whose sole purpose is to make sure Griffin's Farm is self-sufficient, is enjoyed by generations of people for many decades to come. Our committee also recommended that the six-plus acres of the abandoned sewer beds, which are, well, the mouth's not up there, but they're, they are butted, be combined with the Griffin's Farm property. This parcel of town-owned land abuts the farm and has been vacant and unused for years. This would add more open space and would provide another access to the property through Charles Street. This property also abuts French's Stream and has the advantage of providing access to the abandoned railroad tracks that run into Rockland and beyond. These tracks are currently being turned into a recreational trail to the sea with grant monies available for this project. The Griffin's Dairy Committee purposely had very few specifics in an attempt not to handcuff or limit the proposed Board of Trustees in their ability to come up with this multi-use plan for the property. So those were the recommendations presented to the Selectmen in 2004, so, and they were not voted upon at that time, so don't blame me. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or say, or any questions? I'll wait till you, till the end, Jim, if you don't mind, if anybody else has something that hasn't spoken. Susan, would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
Susan Brennan, 197 Orchard Lane. This is a terrific meeting, I'm glad we're having it, I know it wasn't planned, but has anybody approached Rockland to see what they were going to do with that 20, their portion of it?
Well, it's them, not theirs, it's ours.
The 26 acres in Rockland we purchased.
Right. So we own part of Rockland ironically.
Well, that was my question. So are they going to want to have a say in this, or no? They've just written they have no say in it. I know we purchased it, but...
Yeah, so...
As a courtesy.
No, I don't, I don't think it's out of the question that there would, might be some permitting issues that, that may be, exist with Rockland, but Rockland doesn't have any particular control over it. But to the best of my knowledge, I don't think anybody's had a conversation with the town of Rockland officially in terms of any vision they had for the, their piece. But again, keep in mind, as the chairman pointed out, it is, you know, owned by the town of Abington, it just happens to...
I think it's mostly wet in that area, too. I know it does abut their golf course over there, but do you, do you have a question to answer to that question?
I was going to basically provide a little information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
In regards to her question pertaining to Rockland, one, you would have to contact the Conservation Commission in Rockland. To maintain it as farming, you would also have to do the same thing. The acreage that exists in Rockland is all forested wetlands, virtually 100% of it. You could not use it for anything other than forested wetlands. You can farm it.
Does anybody else have any questions or statement? Yes, ma'am, come on back up.
Sorry.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, too, appreciate it.
292 Plymouth Street, in case you didn't remember. I was just looking at this map here.
Yes.
And I noticed, I, I'm not sure what that says, is that concrete bed or a concrete...
I believe it's the power lines. I believe it's the power lines.
Oh, okay, but there's no, like, is there, like, concrete underneath there?
I don't think so.
Because wouldn't it make sense to use that portion for the soccer fields? Like, this part of the acreage? And they can go in through Charles Street? Is that Charles Street?
Again, that's something that you could bring up with them, I don't know if that's wet over there or not, but...
Go in through Charles Street and then have parking there, and then...
That was actually one of the recommendations, that we combine it with the sewer beds, that that six acre is there.
Ma'am, I think what it says is that they found a concrete, concrete bound, so when they were doing the survey, I think it, there's a concrete bound in the ground that they can use when they're doing the survey. I don't think the whole thing is concrete, I think it's just a concrete bound.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't be like, because they're telling us it's wetland.
Right, I think, no, I think it's, I think it's just a bound for, for surveying purposes.
Soccer fields, yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Christine Smith, 99 Dorsey Street. I do have a question in, I guess, this one here.
Yep.
It has the article that we all voted to purchase this back when.
Yes.
And it states that page 168, for public purposes, including open space and recreation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to do everything necessary and desire to purchase and improve the said land for these purposes. So my question is, if it's here, this is what we voted for, are you guys able to overturn that? If we're coming to you as a soccer board, and lacrosse board, and football board, saying we need this open land for recreation?
Yep.
That's what we voted on back in whatever the state was.
Right.
Are you able to turn us down?
Yeah.
How?
Well, that's what we're here for.
Well, that's my question, and that's what I don't understand. Can you explain that to me?
Sure, and it's not...
Why, how it can be voted to do something different if it was, what if the original intent was?
Well, it doesn't say soccer fields, it said open space and recreation.
Recreation.
Right, right.
So we're approaching you as a recreational request to utilize the fields for that.
Public purposes, including, yes.
So that can happen, that you can say no?
I guess so.
I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, I don't know anything about this type of stuff.
My only comment, it wouldn't be the Selectmen, right, it would be the town residents. I mean, you know, this would have to go to town meeting, we're not going to decide this is what we're going to do, so it's...
So this would go to a vote?
Well, I mean, when we put together...
Not necessarily, I think it depends on if there would be an expenditure up there that you need town funds for, then that definitely would go to a vote at town meeting.
Well, I think my understanding is, is that we're talking about appropriating the funds necessary to fix it and do what we need to do, so that would not be...
So that would not require a town vote, no, if you, if you guys...
So then you guys would have the governing say if it would go or wouldn't?
I, I would say yes, I mean, is it going to be used for, what, read it again, public use, including...
It says the, including open space and recreation, and basically that you guys would do whatever you needed to do to make sure that it was done for that purpose.
Right, so there are a lot of public uses, not just playing fields, there are, you know, there, that's why we had this meeting tonight, is to hear what public uses people would like to see used for.
All right, thank you for the question, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Manning. With another great Christmas tie.
Robert Manning, 34 Orange Street. Board of Health, Boy Scouts, volunteer for Jack Bailey, whatever he needs, whenever he wants. I just want to point out, whatever, whatever is determined as a Boy Scout leader or a former Boy Scout leader, the Boy Scouts, we've always are always looking for projects, and anything you're doing to modify, help, assist, or need gravel moved, bridges built, we've done, there's not much we haven't done. So I just want to point out to the board and to the audience that when, when and if you're ready to do things, please don't forget the Boy Scouts, because the Boy Scouts are already willing and able to help, and they also need it, because they need to have projects to do advancements. So please just keep them in mind. Speaking for the Boy Scouts, in addition to the different grary being, being used for farming and used, being used for possibility of facilities, it wouldn't hurt to have a park, it wouldn't hurt to have a place where the boys could have crossovers and have a, a little fire, and, you know, maybe even sleep over once in a while in their own, in their own town, as opposed to having to go every place else to do that. I'm not looking for a big camp, I'm not looking, I'm just looking for a place for 15 or 18 boys to sleep out overnight under the stars and just see what the wonders of, of a farming area could be like, and an environment there to hear the crickets quick and stuff like that, too. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. One of the best plugs I've ever heard.
Good evening. Kate Casey, I'm the Associate Athletic Director at Abington High School, I'm also the varsity soccer and lacrosse coach. So I currently don't live in town, but I grew up here, and I just wanted to make a couple remarks about the passion that you spoke of, and this is a very passionate meeting, and that's why I came back to work in Abington, because of the passion that's here. If there were fields available, I'm not an engineer, I'm not into, I don't know anything about soil, but if there were fields available, the students of Abington High School would greatly benefit from the additional practice fields that would be available to us.
Thank you very much, thank you. Yes, young lady?
I just have a couple of questions.
Wait, wait till you get to the microphone before you...
Suzanne Jesperg, 188 Central Street. What is it, I just want to clear, get a little clarity. So we would call Old Colony, they would survey, what is the timeframe of that?
I could probably speak to that.
I don't have a great answer for that. Presumably, early in the coming calendar year, the project would begin there, and of course, a lot of that is data collection, a lot of it already exists, has been pointed out, and, and the needs assessment, which is more or less part of the process you're going through right now. So I don't know how many months it's going to take Old Colony Planning Council to, to put together some sort of plan. I, I wish I had a better, I...
And they would give us the options, what we can and cannot do for that particular piece of property.
Yes, more or less, that is the goal, right. But again, keep in mind, it's, this, planning is planning, it's not, it's not like, you know, it's contingent upon things, it's contingent upon a lot of the factors and the geographic issues that have been raised today, so it's not like just adding five and five and saying, okay, that's, that's where we are today. So it's, it's, and it's all going to be interactive to some extent also with the policymakers, presumably Park and Rec, as well as the Board of Selectmen.
So then after that, they give us their options, and we will come back to a Selectmen's meeting and discuss what we, what we can and cannot do, or have or not have because of the, the area? I just want to clarify.
Yeah, I think all, I think that's probably the case, yes.
I'll point us to everything out in public, like, like we're doing tonight, and just, you know, for better or for worse.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, in the back? Don't be nervous.
Hi, my name's Jean Pendole, I live at 342 Plymouth Street with my mother, Mary Griffin, and I'm glad that people have talked about the wetness of the land. In fact, I learned something new, that the wet, wetness of the land is increasing, which I did not know. I'm a little bit concerned whether the land is used for agricultural or recreational purposes. Is there a way we can increase the amount of wetland from increasing? I feel, what I feel about wetlands, I know it increases mosquitoes. I also have a home in Middleborough, and we have a big problem there with equine encephalitis and mosquitoes. I used the Griffin's Dairy land during the summer, and I noticed what a problem there was with mosquitoes. That's not safe for the people of Abington, it's not safe for the young people in the athletic leagues, or the people who use it recreationally, or, or for gardening. So whatever we decide to use it for, I would like to see perhaps the wetlands, the wetness of the land slightly decrease to the more, the normal level it was the beginning in 1998, certainly not increase whether it's developed for either purpose. And I was wondering if there is, if the people want to develop for soccer or for agricultural purposes, if they have any plans to slow the development of the wetness of the land.
That's an excellent question. And I think that when Jim wants to speak, and I'm sure he can touch upon that, because he's the one that brought up the issue about the expanding wetlands, before Jim comes up, anyone else, please, have anything to say? No? All right, Jim, and then we'll final recap from the board. I didn't see any other hands out there, so. Mr. Dombrowski, please, would you answer that question?
First of all, to address the issue of the streams and the backing up of wetlands there, you would have to go through the permit process, not only through the local Conservation Commission, you would have, also go through the Army Corps of Engineers to get a permit. The school department has a letter on record from the Army Corps of Engineers stating that, that anything they may be doing to alter those streams may require a permit through them. So again, Conservation Commission is one permit, Army Corps of Engineers is another permit. Can it be done? It could be, yes. You can go through the process of working with the USDA, and this is something that the Griffin's Dairy Study Committee should be working with, is talking with the USDA to work on an agricultural plan for Griffin's Farm. It's a viable process. The USDA can give you a long-term plan which would address those particular issues specifically. But again, if you're not going to go through the process of preserving it as agricultural land, the USDA is not going to get involved. Now, currently through the open space plan, it lists 44 acres of playfields in there. Can't remember what page it is, but it's in the book. It also cites four-acre deficiency of playfields, and I agree that you need some extra playfields. There is land out there, whether you go through the process of taking land that's underutilized or land that's currently undeveloped, there is land out there that could be done. That's a long-term solution. And I realize what you're looking for is something immediate, but I just don't think going on Griffin's Dairy is the right place. The unfortunate thing is when it mentions 44 acres of playfields, look back when we purchased Truffant's Farm property. The language in the article is almost identical when it talks about for public use, open space, and things of that nature. We, the town, elected at that time to purchase Truffant's Farm, our Strawberry Valley Golf Course, and we also went through the process and voted to make it a golf course, or continue it as a golf course. It's become a gem for the town. But that's 50 acres of recreational land. If that golf ever died, what were you going to do up there? Build on it. It's dedicated recreational land. But the language in the, in the article is identical to what we use in Griffin's Dairy, with some variations. So the town has 94 acres of recreational land, not 44.
So you're ending on a positive note?
Yes, I'm fine.
I don't know why you, it's a good thing, Jim.
I'll end up on a positive note. The school department currently has 14 acres of land on Barackton Avenue and High Street that could be developed for multi-use fields. It's a long-term solution. The fields behind ECC Center, we used to play football on.
You're not, you're not ending on a positive note, let's talk about Griffin's Farm.
Griffin's Farm, bring back the cows.
Mr. Murray.
Positive note. Joe Murray, 499 Randolph Street. I'm one of the few people, I think, in the crowd that wants both, although, Ann, I'm glad to hear what you've said, because I think, I'm kind of in the same thinking as, as that. I, I think we missed the boat by not keeping the barn, I really do. And I can say that, because I was up here looking at people asking to work on that, and I think we missed the boat. We let a valuable piece of history in Abington go away, and it's not coming back. And it's what makes the town Abington. And we can't let that happen again. We really can't. The question is, how do we do both? I coached for 10 years, I love soccer, I want to see fields, I have little grandchildren growing up, they love playing soccer, how do we do both? What I'm concerned about is that I haven't heard anybody say, how do we get to that quickly? So it's been going on since 1999, 1998, Kenny's been up here many, many times and approached the trustee situation, and Gary Minahan, and the rest of the committee, how do we do both? So what I'm, what I'm interested in from the Board of Selectmen is, how do we get there quick? If it's the Old Colony Planning Council, if that's what we're going to rely on, then we need to do it tomorrow. We need to act quickly, because the fields need to be figured out quickly, because they have nowhere to go. But we can't lose the farm. We can't lose the farm. Multi-use recreational, fantastic stuff. When you go to other towns now, what are they doing? They're bringing back farms. Organic farming is huge. That's what people want to see, it's a great educational opportunity. It's 33 acres, and my big worry is, I hear wetlands, and I do construction, and I do those notice of intents, I'm very, very familiar with it, I've recreated wetlands areas, so I'm very, very familiar with the situation. I just don't know how we do both. I'm not sure I'm the right guy to answer that question, but what I'm urging the board to do is find the right guys, team, whatever it calls, to go figure that out right away. Because we, we all want something, but we don't know if there's enough land to do everything. So let's go figure it out. Let's do what they're doing upon it. That thing is fantastic. They have wetlands. It's great. They get everything. We can do that right here in Abington.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Are you running for reelection? That was very good.
No.
That was very good. Does anyone else have anything to say? Members of the board, do we have anything to add? Mike? Just to reiterate what you already said, Mr. Chairman, we actually started this process, talked about this quite some time ago, when Chris came forward with the soccer fields, it actually pushed us, because we have kicked this around, Joe, quite a few years, and so we proposed to go to the Old Colony Planning Council, which are professional planners, with the ideas, and that was the whole idea of this meeting tonight, to take your input and bring it to them. A couple of things I would like to know is, number one, in my tenure, or listening to this for a number of years, the agricultural use is fine. I would support that. I'm a skeptic. I need to know once and for all, is this gentleman from Hingham interested or not interested? And what kind of monies are we talking? And is he going to build? I need to know, I need to have those answers. The second thing is, on the sports field, you've talked about a temporary field, you talked about a permanent field, and you don't have to lease it. You're a town function. It would be yours for the thing. I coached a lot of Little League baseball, a lot of soccer. And traveling to the different towns, I was very, very envious. When you went to a complex that was, had the concession stand in the middle and two or three fields, it was well thought out and it was designed. And if you're going to put permanent fields in there, you're going to have to put drainage and everything in, you're going to have to, if in fact we can, and I'll support that. But I'd just say, if it's going to be a permanent, we spent, when I was involved with Usaka, $18,000 to do over a field, which was the one just adjacent, perpendicular to the parking lot, because it was concave, and, you know, you know what it's like. You're down there, you get your kids there, they want to play, and it's all mud and stuff, so... But those types of things, I mean, if we were to go permanent, very honestly, we'd have to look at bathrooms, we'd have to look at parking, we'd have to look in fairness to handicapped accessibility, and all those types of things are going to have to be addressed. So in answer to Mr. Murray's question, could we do it overnight? No, I don't think we could. Certainly want to work together, and we will. If there's any solution to that, we'll work it out. I would like to meet with you guys at some point in time and put my thoughts together and see if we can.
I just want to make clear, we support both. The Usaka, you both, you don't want to take over each other.
No, no. I realize that. I'm just saying that's the point. As far as some of the other things go, the community gardens, great idea, I think we can continue that and maybe expand it, and with that mention about the use of the land and, you know, recreation facilities and stuff. Again, I hope that this plan, when they come back, would say, "This would be a good area for a playground, this would be a good area for whatever." I mean, my kids were talking about a splash pad or something like that you could put. I mean, there's all kinds of good, there's no bad ideas. They're all good. It's just whether or not they're feasible and viable. You know, Bob Manning talked about something, the scouts and different, and then Mrs. Casey talked about the athletic director and the fields and stuff like that, which would be good if we had a couple of extra ones. So they're all good ideas. I just don't know, to Mr. Murray's point, if we can get it done that fast. Up to the microphone, please.
Chris Walsh, Usaka. When we met last time, that was kind of like off the cuff when I was talking, but I thought you said that right now we're putting in the talk to Old Colony because it's a, you know, you get in line and they're not charging us? Is there a way we can pay a fee and get this done sooner than later?
Go ahead, Rick.
Well, they have a program where they'll do certain, put in a certain amount of time and energy for each of the communities in their regional planning district.
And that's the free...
Over a period of time. That is correct.
And so we could pay and have it done sooner?
Well, that's, again, there's no appropriation at the moment from the town to do that.
But that's an option.
Right, but I guess we'd have, need to have a special town meeting and appropriate the funds, but it is, it may not hasten the process, is what you're, if that's the fundamental question.
The freebie starts January 1st, this calendar year, so we're only two weeks away from being able to take advantage of that.
I was wondering how many other people will be in front of this in that line?
Right.
That's what my concern, you know, there's other communities that might be looking for...
Some planning help.
You know, I'm on the, I'm not trying to put pressure on, because I love all these ideas. I'd love to see exactly what you were describing, you know, have agriculture, have everything wrapped around, have a walking park around the whole place, have kids on a scouting. But you can use the soccer fields and lacrosse fields and football fields for the same purpose. It's a multipurpose field. It's flat, it's grass. My concern is the timeframe of this. Because I'm on the board, you know, we have kids we answer to, we have parents we have to answer to. Because I know I'm going to get calls tomorrow when I get out of here. What happened last night? And this is what I have to tell them.
But I think, just to Mike's point, I think you need to plan for Plan B, only because Plan A is not going to be, is not a definite thing, obviously.
Absolutely, I understand that.
So you need to plan for Plan B with the hope that Plan A will take, in time for you to be able to take initiative.
The urgency of Plan A is strong.
And we understand that.
And we will get on this right away, too.
Yeah, I think, you know, not to be the downer in the room.
No.
Jim, I don't want to steal your thunder here. I don't want to be, not to be, but, you know, the, you know, the government process was never designed to be quick. It's supposed to be...
Fortunately.
No, it's not. It's designed to be inclusive and participatory, and by definition, it takes time to do things. So to Mike's point, to do a good planning process quickly is, it's hard to pull that off, but, you know, we'll obviously do the best we can, but I just think we do have to be realistic, though.
Oh, I, 100 percent.
That's all.
Like the passion she has for the community gardens, which I also have, I also have a strong passion for the kids in this town.
Yup.
And the kids, the future of this town, as some of these people that have stood up. The athletic director, she was from this town, she's back here. It's the passion that drives us. Everybody in this room is passionate about something. If not, they wouldn't be in this room.
You're right.
And that's, I just, you know, Mike, you know, like right now, my hands are here in my arms, I'm concerned about the kids. You know, and that's why I'm this, you know, I don't want to keep beating the center.
We appreciate your passion. Passion's a good thing.
Alright, alright, so I'm sorry.
No rumbles outside, though. Mike, did you finish, or you more? No, I'm all set. I appreciate the people coming. I think it was a good meeting, and, you know, good stuff, all the way. Tom?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You know, they say hindsight is 20/20, but, you know, when you look at this 16 years after we purchased the property, it really is sort of amazing to me, because when you looked at the first report compared to the existing study committee, I saw a lot of the same themes. That it's kind of amazing we haven't been able to get anything done before. But just to reiterate some problems that I heard, and for residents, I lived on Plymouth Street for 10 years or so back in the, I hate to say it, in the 60s, late 60s and 70s. But there is a water problem there, and there's no doubt about it, and I think we need to be very cognizant of the residents there, that we can't go in willy-nilly and start building fields without, you know, proper engineering, or whatever. And the other thing, Chris, that I'm concerned with, and again, I'm a sports guy with my kids, and I support, you know, fields and whatever, but I'm real concerned that it didn't come across strongly to me that you had a Plan B. Because even if this report was here January 1st, I think you heard Mr. Dombrowski and other speakers, that there's a lot of steps that need to, you know, go through to make this a reality. And the other thing that I think one of the selectmen brought up is, you know, once you're seated, to me, it seems to me like it's a good three to six months before that turf takes effect. So again, I appreciate all the speakers. Again, I seem to see a sort of a common theme, as we've had mixed use. I thought the vision that the existing study committee looked at was very similar in, you know, between community garden, practice fields, although I didn't hear consideration for solar, I didn't hear that come up at all. So I'm not sure if that would be something that we would, you know, relate as a requirement for Old Colony, but again, thought it was a good discussion, you know, for this hearing.
Annie?
I just had a couple of questions, Chris, as far as, I mean, Rick, as far as the process goes. Does Old Colony Planning Council need a recommendation from us as to what we want to see done, or is this meeting tonight, with all the input we have, is that sufficient for you to go to them?
Unless there's any, I would suggest that what we've heard tonight is sufficient, unless the Board of Selectmen, either tonight or in the near future, decides that whatever, some of the options that came up tonight that you're absolutely opposed to, that would be, other than that, I think if you're supportive of the ideas and that the question is, what can we accommodate, you know, there are some things that may not be able to accommodate, I don't know, then I think, I think...
Well, I only ask that because one option that was suggested is mutually exclusive to all the others, I think, right? The agricultural use, the straight agricultural use, will be leased out to a farmer or a dairy guy, is going to take, I would think, the whole parcel...
Yeah, I wouldn't think you'd need a planning process to even accomplish that. I think it would be an RFP process to get a vendor in the area.
But my point is, what if the board wants to say, "We want to just leave it agricultural"? Do we need to make that determination? I think we do, if that's the case, right? If we, that was an option that was presented tonight.
I would think you'd want to do that sooner rather than later.
I agree, right.
Because why engage in a planning process?
If the board's not going to head towards a mixed use...
Exactly.
Sort of a thing, so...
No, I misunderstood your question.
When do we meet again? Next week?
We can meet next Monday.
Maybe we should put that on the agenda, just to, unless you want to make a determination tonight as to whether or not you'd like to take something off the table, or not take something off the table?
I, Manny's fine, but I kind of, my mind's made up on what I should do.
Yeah, I'm sort of prepared.
Okay.
Throw a motion out there. I just want to say something before. I mean, we're having this argument, but it probably wouldn't have happened if we didn't buy the land, and we'd be sitting there with all kinds of apartments and condominiums there right now, we wouldn't be having this discussion, so in hindsight, maybe that is a good thing, so. I'd like to see it mixed use, and I'd like to try to present all these, understand that you're a valid point, that agriculture would take it off. I just have my questions as whether or not, serious questions, whether or not it's viable. I don't want that to hold hostage to the rest of the programs we talked about tonight.
But that's the whole purpose of going to them, is it viable? Are these uses viable up there?
Right.
And you're right, maybe at some point they'll come back and say, "None of these uses are okay," and then you look at agricultural, I guess at that point.
It might be that we could accommodate all of them. I'm just questioning, no, what I think I know, and I'm like that, but I'd like to present them all, and like to go for mixed use.
I'm with you. I think we should present them mixed use. I think we purchased it, it was very clear when I was at a town meeting, that back in, when was it?
98.
98, that we purchased it for the entire town to use, not just for a farmer to come in here and farm the place. We used it, we purchased it so people could use it for open space and for recreation.
Yeah, I'm going to interject here. This is the court ruling from our town attorney, and it's the second one, we did one in '26 and 2011. The term "public purposes" has been construed by the courts to include parks, recreational land, open space, schools, public parking, urban renewal, or other uses that are for the benefit of the public at large. So it doesn't really, by putting that in the article, that was the intent, that we had a broader range. Is someone making a motion, and what is the motion? I make the motion that we present to Old Colony Planning Council the information we gathered tonight, and wait on their recommendation on that, and understand, again, this is not our piece of property, it's our, this, everybody in this room.